... selectmen's meeting this evening, Monday, June 17th, 2019, 6:00 PM. Tonight's meeting is broadcast live on local TV. You can also watch it on YouTube. Can you stand for a please, allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe we have any minutes tonight, do we?
I'm whipping through it real quick here. I don't see them or...
Alright, given that I don't see any, I'll take, I'll accept a motion for the warrant and payroll.
Make a motion that we approve and sign Treasury Warrant 26 and Payroll.
Do you have a second?
Is that it? Before you do that, is that in here?
I have them right here. The originals right here.
Oh, okay. Got it.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No minutes.
We have, we have.
Not available. She's doing them by YouTube, Dick.
And that meeting just got posted, so I'd imagine, I might feel a little bit behind.
Is anyone here for the public hearing on Class II license? Anybody representing? Do you represent the owner?
I'm an owner nearby.
You're in a butter?
What?
Are you in a butter or is he one of the owners?
I'm here for the Class III license that you're going to discuss, and I'm an owner that lives nearby the facility.
Oh, okay. I will be for anybody that represents the dealer.
Anthony's Auto.
There's no one here, we'll just, we'll postpone this till later on in the meeting. There's no one here, there's no one here to represent the business, so I'm going to put it off till later on in the meeting in case they're running late. Okay?
Oh, you mean the person that wants a Class III has to be here?
Yes.
Oh, I see, okay.
I guess we will have the public hearing now. Alright, I hear, if I open a public hearing for Anthony's Auto, an application for a Class II license, deal with secondhand automobiles. Would you like to give a quick rundown?
You know, same thing as always, but just the car sales, you know?
The location is?
Yeah, plenty big enough, yeah.
Property right next to Countryside Estates?
Been there for 80 years. Nothing's changing, I guess.
Right. Anybody have any questions? Any comments? Did you have a comment, Ms.?
Is this the owner here now?
Yes, yes it is.
Yeah, I do have a comment.
Could you just tell us who you are and where you live, please?
Yes, I'm Virginia Gagnon. I own a condo, a Countryside Estate, which faces the building that we're discussing. In my experience was in the past, we had problems with the fumes and also with noise, and sometimes it would be loud at night, and I wondered how long it would go on, and I don't know if they're painting this time or not. So I was here to find out, are they going to paint and how safe are the fumes? I know we, it was sickening, the fumes.
Can you address her concerns?
Well, I don't know about that, but I had a meeting with the town a few years ago about that situation. They said it could be open until 10 o'clock at night and I can, until Saturday, Saturday to Saturday. So, if you want to look it up on that, you can. We went to court and all that stuff.
Your question is, are you going to be painting there too?
Probably a little bit, yeah.
Little bit.
Nothing to bother anybody, you know? There's no fumes down there. Never has been, you know? Never had a complaint once. I've been there once, you know?
Well, in the fumes is toxic substances that are carcinogenic.
It's all water-based now. It's all water-based paint.
There's cadmium and some other things with zinc, with zinc and lead.
It's all, boy, it's all water-based paint.
You what?
It's all water-based paint. It won't hurt, it won't hurt you, believe me. It won't hurt you.
It's to, I know they're toxic, and some states don't allow it.
Well, we don't pay like a big body shop, no.
No?
No.
Well, they were very strong before, and the noise was loud at night, and you need, you can't be keeping your windows closed all the time.
Well, I went over with that town a few years ago, so you'll have to look it up what they said.
So how late are you going to stay open?
And they agreed on what I had to do, that's all I can tell you.
What are you doing, working out?
How late are you going to stay open?
Probably about eight.
That's late, and you start early in the morning?
Well, I know you're old and you go to bed at six, but, you know.
You're starting at six and you're going to eight o'clock?
But I'd ask that, you kind of respect the individual commenting, please?
I did, but I'm old too.
Yeah, you can keep that to yourself, okay?
Yeah.
Is there proper ventilation for painting in the building?
Oh, yeah. Got fans in there, special fans, and it's all good, everything.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments? If there's nothing else, I, if I close the hearing, and if anybody wants to make a motion, I'll accept a motion.
Do you have the application in front of us? Can I see it?
Absolutely.
Is there any documents or anything that go with it?
See, everything, all the paperwork's been completed.
And how long has the company been in existence? Do we know? How long have you been?
This is going to be recent, the person that we rented it to forever, for the last, what, 40 years maybe, recently passed away. So now it's going back to the original owner.
Just going back to me, I don't know.
So this is Kenny Graniere?
Yeah.
Yeah, Kenny Graniere passed away, so.
Okay, and you're going to take it over from what he did?
Yeah, I was, yeah, yeah.
So, so is it going to be the same business model?
Pretty much, yeah, same thing.
Was pretty much?
Yeah, same thing, yeah. We don't bother anybody, you know? Someone told me if I was bothering, I'd take care of it, you know? I'm not like that.
Well, I don't know how long ago she's been talking about the fumes. Has it been the last five years, 10 years, 20 years?
It was when they had the auto body shop, you know, when they were really working on cars.
That was probably like, what, back in the eighties?
This is a while ago, yeah.
Seventies and eighties?
I've been there 40 years.
Okay, so that's, that's been a long time.
Yeah, I've been there 40 years.
But they haven't done that.
And there are many people on that side that are new, and they don't even know, have any experience. I'm the only one that has the experience left.
But I think that was way back.
So I'm here to represent everyone else.
I think that was way back in the seventies and eighties, because Kenny hasn't been doing that.
It was probably in the eighties, but if you're going to follow the same thing, you know, we're going to be left, windows closed, fumes and noise.
Well, he's going to follow the same thing as Kenny did now for the last 20 years or whatever, and now everything has all these...
Excuse me, we have to wrap it up. The hearing is already closed.
Oh, sorry.
So we do...
You've answered the question.
We do have correspondence from Mrs. Gagnon, right? So could we just have a second to look it over? So you, you had submitted a, a letter to...
I submitted a letter, yeah.
Okay, so this is the first we're seeing of it because of everything open meeting here, so I want to, I want to see your concerns, okay?
Jeff, could you sling that on down when you're done?
You bet.
Thank you.
So I'll, if it's okay with the chair, I'll just synopsize what, what the concerns are here, because she has it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so it's a, it's acknowledgement of the hearing that's coming up there, concerns from Ms. Gagnon. Will painting be done or remodeling, or rebuilding the secondhand cars? Concern about the odors that made them feel sick. Will work be done on the weekends? Loud noises were heard at times until late hours. Will there be times specific when work can begin and should end on whatever day that the work is being done? Will things be left on the ground that could be harmful or messy looking? In the past, there was boxcar for supplies and things left out on the grounds. And will there be many cars beyond their permitted amount parked on the grounds? So four legitimate concerns by an abutter. Okay, I'd, I'd be interested in hearing any responses to those four.
Well, you want to keep them, do a, reopen the hearing?
Yeah.
And if you want to address them one at a time with the owner.
I would, I would like to.
So I guess, if I may, through the chair, it sounds like some, it's not necessarily clear if this was happening under your, your running of the business or one of your tenants who are running a business. So knowing that these are some concerns and from abutters, can we just have a follow-up and conversation about, now it's brought to your attention that these are concerns, and can we just have a dialogue about that?
Okay.
No, no.
Yeah, if we can have a back, run down the four concerns.
Go ahead.
That's okay. Alright, so Mr. and Mrs. Clario, will painting be done or remodeling, in remodeling or rebuilding the secondhand cars?
Yes.
You said yes. Okay, and the past strong odors, what has been done to alleviate any of the strong odors that might be coming as a result of the painting?
I don't paint very much, you know?
Is it going to be a lesser amount of paint than the previous?
I won't paint hardly at all. Touches up stuff really.
What are the hours? What are your hours?
I don't know, I went over that with the planning board before, you know, years ago, and we had meetings on all that. You could look that up again, and, you know, because they are already dressed all that, full of people. So doesn't, doesn't that continue on in the garage?
Save us some time. Well, I don't, I'm asking you, what are your proposed hours?
I already went over that before, with the, with the, but then before. I thought 8:00 to 8:00.
Monday to Friday?
Yeah.
Or seven days a week?
Probably, no, six.
Six days a week.
Saturday to, you're going to have Saturday too?
Yeah.
Sunday, no Sunday.
Monday to Saturday.
Probably half a day on Saturday.
8:00 to 8:00 P. All days except Sunday, close Sunday. The amount of painting will be less than the previous owner? Ground clutter, will things be left on the ground that could be harmful or messy looking?
Nothing, there's nothing. It's pretty clean, if you want to go down and look at it, go ahead.
How's it look now, Ms. Gagnon?
Actually, I can't see it because all the trees are out, but once they're down, in the winter, you can see it. You can see everything in the yard. I don't know if the boxcar is still there or any of the other stuff left. In the front, it looks pretty cleaned up right now, because I don't, I don't know if they're doing anything there right now, but...
So...
At one time, they had a whole lot of stuff in the yard, and I didn't know if there were clean utensils or what was there, but very often the children will even go over there, and they shouldn't, I know, but there's nothing to prevent them. We do have a fence and some albatites, you know, that grow just a certain height, and then there's regular trees at this time of year. But the other side is open, so I don't really know, but I know it was a concern about the kids and stuff on the ground.
Through the chair, do you, do you understand that gentleman is saying that this is a new ownership?
Yes.
That the previous gentleman who, the problems that you're explaining, passed away?
Yes.
So this is going to be a new ownership?
Yeah.
That he said is going to be a lesser amount of painting? The painting is, is water-based, it's not going to have the odors in the past? And then the hours are 8 o'clock AM till 8 o'clock PM?
Except on Sunday, huh?
Except on, that's what he's saying. Do you understand that, what he's saying? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I think 8 o'clock at night is still kind of late, but I mean, you know, I think 6 o'clock is late enough, but that's my opinion, and having lived there, I would say that, you know?
But it's not 10 o'clock?
It's not 10 o'clock, no.
Okay, well, this is a license, right? With a licensing authority. If something happens that could be a violation of the license, you could always come back to this authority and say, hey, this is what was discussed, this is my understanding, and now we're, you know, banging on the drums at 2:00 AM, and then, you know, the license could be adjusted that way, if that's possible solution. I mean, I believe...
It can always be done.
It can always be done, if, if there's a violation of that.
We could always have a public hearing.
You have an open invite.
If there's violations, we could always have another public hearing, and we could address violations.
Right, this, but this is a new business. We, I mean, it's commercial, it's a commercial business which, which, I mean, we, we want to support, but if there's anything that, that appears to be out of the ordinary, I would, I want you to understand that you can come in anytime, send that same email that you did. Would that be okay for now? Give, give him a chance?
Yes, definitely, yeah.
Especially since you said that the front doesn't look as cluttered as, as before. Mrs. Clario, will you work with them? Yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And we have a note here that you're requesting a 20 vehicle limit, is that?
Yeah.
It's just a note on your application, I just wanted to confirm that that was from you and...
How many did Mr. Graniere have cars? How many cars did he run normally?
They care about the same, I'm not sure. I didn't see his license.
So these are cars for sale, not, not a junkyard, I guess, or scraps?
I don't think there's anything in there from the past license.
Class, okay, so about 20 cars?
We can't get provided any of that.
More or less?
What's that?
Would you be okay for that with moving forward and wait to hear from you if there's any problems? Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
And so, before, no, before we close the hearing again, is there any other questions or comments or anything, I guess?
We'll give you a few minutes to look it over.
Does it specify on the license?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Clario.
Name and address, please.
Harry Sackler, 13 Beachway Drive. You have, you're going to be open from 8 to 8. Is that to sell cars or is that to do heavy work inside the shop?
Probably, probably, you know, you get sales, you get to stay a little open, because it's car sales, but work, no.
Because I'm thinking if you're pounding and making noise and that stuff at 8 o'clock, that's when, if you're open for sales for retail, something else.
Mostly that's what it is. I wouldn't do it, I've kind of, we've owned the garage for 80 years, you know, my father and us. I've never had any complaints down here once with me.
Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
How many employees do you have?
I don't know, we'll, we'll see. If I could ever get going, you know? It's only been six months.
Does the license specify the hour of operation?
I don't believe it does.
I don't see anything here.
That might be based on the zoning district too. You know, if they had input from the planning board, and Dick, do you know, is it, do the different zoning districts allow for...
It's been a while, but you, you may have a point there.
For hours of operation?
Number of people, the permit, you know, that work at a certain business, and hours. It's something I'd have to look up again.
That's okay, but maybe we can coordinate with planning board just to make sure that everybody is getting the right information and the same information versus...
I've already got it written down.
Yeah, thank you.
But whatever it is, he would have to comply with it.
Right.
Right.
No, but just that we're all getting the same information and that there's justification behind it versus some arbitrary, we're choosing 8 o'clock or whatever.
I'm sure if you went in front of planning board and they said it was okay, then...
Right. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm not questioning that it's okay, I just want to make sure that...
What class level was Mr. Graniere's? Is that a three?
I don't know what he had.
There's nothing, nothing before the board to give us any indication what the old license was. The capacity or the class.
It was at least.
How long are the licenses good for? Is it?
One year.
One year, it's one year.
So, Mrs. Gagnon, this would, this would be something that we would review annually. So I would, I'd make the motion, assuming...
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Nothing, anybody from the board? Alright.
Sorry, I didn't realize.
We'll close the hearing then.
Didn't realize you were back, we're still...
We have to close the hearing first. No.
I would, assuming that all the paperwork's in order, I would make the motion to approve the Class III license and with the comments added that if citizens were concerned that the doors open for them to come right back and communicate. Okay?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Granted.
Do we need to sign it?
Yep.
You'll have to go to, you'll have to go to the selectmen's office tomorrow and pick it up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else have a public comment?
Me?
Yes?
Quick?
That's your time.
We've got two coming up here. Who you calling?
Can you hold on, Paul? Paul, can you hold on? Sure, lady was first. If you could let her s...
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, just give us your name and address.
Okay, well, my official name is Joan K. Highland, I'm known as Kathy Highland, I live at 16 Kyle Hunter Circle. And one of the things that bothers me is the trash that's on the side of the road. And in that trash, this is the second bucket that I've picked up, this was on Intervale Road, and there's an ant there, let me just... But anyway, so this was, it's probably a third of a mile on Intervale Road, it's the north part of Intervale Road, and there are NIPs. And so it's a double-edged sword. What bothers me is if somebody has two or three of those little NIPs, they are considered under the influence, and we need to do something about this, not only litter, but the fact that they're driving, or they possibly could be driving, they probably just don't want to go home to their little bride and, and have her see the bottle, so they toss them out the window. So it's not only somebody that is buying NIPs, throwing them out the window, they're driving impaired. I did check with Holden. Holden went through the procedure, and I thought it was just, I thought there was a bylaw change. In Holden, you cannot buy NIPs, and I would like very much to start the process to see possibly we could get rid of the NIPs in Rutland. And if it's one of those things, town by town, they had to start somewhere with smoking in restaurants. So if they could do the same thing with this, I would appreciate it. So I did bring in, it's a visual aid, so you can see that I'm not kidding. There was one on Palmigossett that went from approximately the Rutland Marketplace to Miles Road, which is a very short period of time, and there was that many. So, it's a problem, people. So if that's something that, I don't know what the procedure would be to, to look in, and but what surprised me was that the selectmen in Holden voted on it and it passed, it did not go into the bylaws, it's just in the selectmen's meeting. But in Holden, you cannot buy NIPs.
I know you cannot in Holden, but I don't know exactly what the procedure was in Holden. I don't know if it has to be a bylaw. I don't think, I don't think the board...
It did not go into a bylaw, I talked to the town clerk today. But anyway, so it's just something, and if this is the first, if this is the first step, I'm serious about following through and see that if we can do, have that, so that they are not, would not be allowed to, to sell NIPs. From what I understand, it's obviously the, the package stores are thrilled to do it because they think they buy them for 30 cents and they can sell them for dollars, so there's quite a bit of a markup. So if they buy three or six and, you know, chug them on the way home, throw them out the window, we, we have two problems. Somebody that's impaired on the, on the road and also the trash on the highway.
Through the chair.
Go right ahead.
Maybe we could have Mike look into what some of the surrounding communities have done? What, maybe would it also be possible for us to look to see if we can get some volunteer labor to maybe clean up some of the main byways of this litter, just to make it, take care of the aesthetic issue?
What bothers me the most is, these came off Intervale Road. Came off Intervale Road, it's a back road, it's a dirt road, and if people are driving up and down a dirt road, throwing all these NIPs around, what are they doing on the main roads, the traffic?
I was just going to say, it's a problem all throughout town, it's not, it doesn't matter, I mean, it's everywhere.
But it's one of those things that if you stack town by town, maybe we can get a handle on it, and Holden has done that.
We were talking about this earlier, Mr. McLaughlin and I, both lived on 122, we used to go out and pick up all the trash. Same thing, beer cans, beer bottles, NIPs, so we'll have the town administrator look into the, to the procedure. I don't know if a public hearing is involved, or if it's just a board and selectmen decision, we're going to have to find that out.
Right, I would be, I would be very appreciative.
So, can we keep you, have you as a contact to keep?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Are there any other solutions other than prohibition of the NIPs?
Well, you know, we don't know that people are actually buying them, and Rutland could be buying them in Hubbardstown or anywhere else, but I don't know what else you could do.
Or are they, are they buying them in proximity of a package store, are they getting them at the Vasecon, drinking them, tossing them right around the corner on the way home or elsewhere? Are they buying them at the marketplace and tossing it out? You know, what I'm getting at, is it the same locales that you're finding all of these, and if so, let's dial in the police chief, throw a camera out there, and start mailing out citations, you know? Is there other option other than banning, you know, banning the product itself?
You have to have cameras all over town, I mean, road has them.
Well, that's my question. Is it, is it anywhere and everywhere, or are you finding them?
Yeah, it seems to be all over.
The same place?
And there was a huge article in the Telegram about, about that, the issues within Worcester. But if every town and every, every city started doing something, maybe you can get a handle on it. It's not just the trash, it's the fact that they are driving intoxicated.
That's on top of the littering issue.
Right, but I'm, it's two-fold, it's not, I'm just not complaining about the trash, I'm complaining about both of them. It's a two-edged sword.
So what are we going to do about it?
I think we got to have Mike look into it. I mean, there's a bunch of different issues there too. We could also have Mike talk to the police chief about how many DUIs are, you know, recorded in town.
Maybe get a grant, maybe get a grant, so.
Through the chair, why don't you have the chief come in and get it on air about it? I think he should be coming to more of your meetings.
Yeah, we can bring him and discuss it.
Yeah, get his opinion.
Let's put him on the agenda for...
If nothing else, we can add some more patrols in that area too.
Yeah, but they're not going to be tossing them out in front of a cruiser.
No.
If you got a grant, you could do something, something clever and creative.
What kind of, what do you mean? What kind of grant are you thinking?
I don't know, get a, buy a...
For equipment, or?
Equipment, you know, like you have the radar, you know, the radar trailer, you could have something that has a camera if you knew it was a common area. If you, if you've got half of that bucket in this area between the ball field and Miles Road, throw one of these things, it doesn't have to be covert, it could be overt. Put it out there, put it on a light pole, watch it, record some plate numbers.
So I'm just, I'm just reading briefly, different towns are addressing this across the state recently, and they're addressing it differently. Some are banning them, some are adding five cent deposits per NIP. Some are not allowing new applicants to sell, so it seems like there's a lot of different options that I definitely think just, you know, we can, with the BLS and Mike, we can try to figure stuff, you know, some different options and figure out what makes the most sense for Rutland and get, you know, police chief and everybody involved also, but...
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's definitely an issue that...
It's definitely an issue.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it up.
Revisit it for a future meeting and get some subject...
Yep, we'll bring the chief in, we'll have Mike do some research.
Let's get it on the agenda for next meeting and between... Let's get it on the agenda for next meeting, and between now and then, Mike can pull up some information, and we can have a discussion.
Noted.
Kathy, I haven't stopped itching since you brought that thing in here, so.
Want me to, want me to take this out of you?
Just the ants.
So sorry about that.
No.
You've been intoxicated by the smell of it.
The smell, yeah, a lot of reasons. So that'll be okay with you?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment? Paul?
Okay, Paul Mattson, Birchwood Road. On the subject of sidewalks, on March thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen, I sent a letter to the editor of the Landmark. And there had been a discussion at a previous, uh, selectmen's meeting about the crosswalk situation in the town of Rutland. And I'm going to quote, uh, two paragraphs from the letter and not the rest of it. Says, "Referring to a recent article on crosswalk situation in the town of Rutland, I believe it fair to offer these additional points. Comments were made about crosswalks to nowhere, lack of ADA approaches to many of them, and while these points are not disputable, I would also like to point out the condition of the town sidewalks. My wife and I are pretty regular walkers in our town, on, on our town sidewalks, and the condition of these should be taken into account. There are locations on these sidewalks that are not usable under ADA guidelines. In fact, a friend of ours who regularly walks on the sidewalks now walks on the side of the road after falls on the sidewalks and decidedly, then decided that it was probably safer to walk along the sides of the road. Um, to the Board of Selectmen, I would like to invite you to join us and any of our regular walkers to start in front of the fire station at a mutually agreeable time, and walk the town sidewalks going in any direction from the starting point to note the conditions that we face when we are walking. Okay, I do understand that there are budget problems that came up this year, and that, uh, both Palmigusset Road and the Maple Ave sidewalk were at one point considered to be shovel-ready, and, um, there's been some financial issues. But my question is, well, two of my questions actually, um, have the representative and senator been contacted about possib- possibility of including these in supplemental budgets? In other words, all right, now, Palmigusset Road, you are looking at, um, Cockens Pond, or Molton Pond actually, now, the dam, and sidewalks down Palmigusset, and so, these, that's one project, and the other part was to repair, um, the sidewalk on Maple Avenue and to extend it down to Prescott Street. So, as it stands right now, the sidewalks are, are, is broken up, the streets are broken, and driveways are broken, and things are just generally, not really all that great as far as walking down a Maple Ave sidewalk is concerned. I think that no matter how we look at the situation, it's two thousand and fourteen, and it's now two thousand and nineteen, it's been five years and nothing really has gone down regarding that sidewalk. And I do think that no matter what, um, even if you can't get it through this year, um, and again, this project and, and Palmigusset side, uh, Palmigusset Road sidewalk and repair are, were considered shovel-ready a year ago. And so, you know, I think we have to maintain, uh, contact with our representative and our senator to make sure that, um, these things are being looked into and that there is follow-up on them, because as I drive up and down Maple Avenue, let's say on an average of two times a day, I see more and more people walking in the street than on the sidewalk. And I've also noted now that when the kids are coming home from school, the walkers that are walking, they're walking down the street with their backpacks on and so on and so forth, or they're walking up the street if they come down through the hospital from Central Tree and walk up to where the, where their residences are. So it's something that I think really needs to be looked into a little bit more, and see if there's something that can possibly get done, and obviously, the sooner the better. Thank you.
Okay, well, as far as Palmigusset Road goes, we have the tip coming, and that, that section of Palmigusset, um, is gonna be completely rebuilt.
Yes.
Yep, sidewalks all the way down through, street lighting, um, that's coming, I think we're on schedule for two thousand twenty-two, I think.
It is now for two, twenty-two for Palmigusset Road, right?
I don't remember the date for Palmigusset, but I also, if I may, remember, um, the, we, I thought we were on schedule for the complete streets of Maple Ave to start, I, hopefully this spring, but I don't see Joe here to follow up, I know it was on his radar, um, to follow up to get the Maple Ave stuff started.
The last I heard, it had been put off, but.
And so.
I don't know.
Uh, I have recently inquired, and, and I was under the impression that something's coming on that.
Without him here, we can't give you a definitive answer.
Okay.
Um, we can, we can bring him in next week on, put it on our agenda. Um, Mr. Buckley, come in, uh, tell, give us an update on what's going on. Um, as far as Main Street goes, we know the state just redid Main Street. Um, so everything on Main Street should be compliant, um, with ADA.
Well, the state fixed up the Main Street sidewalks, they're in very good shape. Um, as another side note there, I've noticed that joggers will run up Maple Avenue and then go down the sidewalks on Main Street, okay, so I mean, you know, these are all things to note, and, you know, I think that the, the arguments are getting more and more convincing. I would hate to see someone get hurt, I mean, seriously hurt, in other words, you know, there's, there's a lot of spots there that are just not good, all right? And they're very easily, can be very easily pointed up, and, um, I don't know, it's just, driveways have been broken up, uh, sidewalks have been broken up, um, just for one, uh, the corner of Phillips Road and Maple Avenue, um, that's not in very good shape at all. So I mean, you know, these are the things that, that are there, that, you know, I think they've really got to be followed up on.
Okay, and we will.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just to let you know that next week I'm gonna try to go to District Three, you remember a letter that the select board had signed about Fishman's Road? I'm gonna start progressing, um, proceeding with that.
About making it one way?
Making it one way, definitely. I'm not gonna give up, let's just put it that way.
Good.
Good, I don't even take it, coming from one twenty-two, I just go the longer way, this one is just not worth it.
Very dangerous at the end. But I'd just let you know anyways, I'll let you know at the next meeting.
All right, good, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else have a public comment?
Deb, I'm gonna be, so I'll follow you.
You're gonna follow me?
Yeah.
Great, okay. Yes?
Yes, if you'd just come up and give us your name and address.
Debbie Carlson, fifty-four Emerald Road, Deputy of the Rutland Agricultural Commission. At the June third meeting, we were provided with town council's opinion as to whether or not the fields at Glenwood School are protected lands. We were invited back tonight to respond to that letter. While the property was indeed acquired by the town for school building purposes, we believe that town council improperly characterized the agricultural fields as unprotected land. In order to protect these prime soils, the physical location of a seventeen to eighteen million dollar, I'm gonna treat me million dollars, seventeen to eighteen million dollar school building was moved, incurring substantially higher costs to taxpayers. Town council states twice in her letter that the land was not in agricultural use when it was acquired, which is not true. The land was indeed actively in agricultural use. You've all seen the letters from Barbara Hobson, um, at the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources to attest to that fact. In the course of the school building project, the Mass Department of Agricultural Resources successfully protected these ag fields from development or disturbance. They also suggested that the field should prom, put, should permanently be protected as agricultural fields. The MDR involvement and the port, importance of the ag field should not end with the school building project. Town council further states that a farmer commenced haying at a later date and without a permit. Again, this is not true. There is a lease for haying fields on town-owned property. The former DPW superintendent verbally asked these fields be added to those fields, and the farmers who have been doing the haying as well as maintenance of the fields agreed. The ag com was in the process of updating the lease to include and differentiate these fields, and had asked that our proposals, um, for the revisions to the lease be sent to town council for review. We never heard back from town council, and then became too involved in the issue of the fields themselves to pursue that issue any further. Town council recommended that the town ascertain whether it used state funds to purchase the property. There was a state grant involved in the building of the school. Both the article at the town meeting and the actual borrowing included both the land and building the school together. Since both the land and school were part and parcel of each other, would it appear that state funding was involved? Town council states that the town contemplated and approved use of the property for active recreational purposes, and in her letter she put in parentheses and quotes athletic fields. While additional use of the properties, while additional uses of the property were discussed, bear in mind that there are over a hundred acres that were purchased. Um, it would make sense that due to the MDR involvement, that these eight-plus acres would not have been considered for these purposes. Further, the article was not amended to include these additional uses. It was voted upon as written, and I quote, "to be used as a site for a new elementary school facility and related activities." This is not a school-related activity, it is a lease to a private entity. Schoolchildren will not be using these fields unless they play through Rutland youth soccer. No less than four times in her letter does the town council state, quote-unquote, "in my opinion", and this is just that, it's her opinion, okay, it is not a legal determination. We would like to remind you of the grants that the town stands to lose if it's, at some point, it is legally determined that this land is indeed protected. And finally, we'd like you to consider an alternative location that is already flat, more centrally located, and not involving prime agricultural soil. Not because there is a possible legal argument surrounding it, but because it's the right thing to do. A drive-by the school with those beautiful fields is quintessential and picturesque New England. It is also right in line with one of the goals of the Rutland Town Master Plan, the goal to preserve the rural character and scenic vistas along Rutland's roadways.
Can I ask a question through the chair?
Go ahead.
When you said, I just want to clarify, the state funding that was used, that you alluded to, for the building of the school, um, what, where did that funding come from? Do you recall?
I have it in an email in my phone, um, I can provide that information to you, but not right at the moment.
I can take a look, it's not a big deal. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have you forwarded all this information to, um, the town administrator and/or, uh, town council?
That was one of my other questions, was I was going to ask if we could forward this to the town administrator to ask him to refer it to town council, you know, as our response to her letter?
Absolutely.
Of course.
Absolutely, yeah.
I think, um, that the Glenwood RFP, uh, will be on our next, actually on our agenda for our next board meeting. So if you can forward it to Mike and ask to have it forwarded to town council or whatever, then that will give two weeks, I think, to.
Yep, I can do that tomorrow, absolutely.
Try to sort it out between legal and, you know what I mean, get legal, full take on everything.
Absolutely, I will get it done tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask what the agricultural committee is looking for?
Are you, are you all set, so you can ask a question?
Well, I just wanted to ask it.
We have to stand up and give you a name and address, please.
Charme LaFon, one seventy-five Barry Paxton Road. Uh, the question is, cause she's bringing this to the board, I'm asking, what is the agricultural committee trying to accomplish?
We're trying to save prime agricultural soils from being turned into soccer fields. There has to be, or we would like to see, um, something that's, that works for everybody in the town, something that works for soccer, we understand your need for fields, we are certainly not anti-soccer. However, we do not believe that prime ag soils should be compromised as a result.
Okay, I, I, just so you know, I did speak with, um, the lady that handled the, um, the land previously when the, um, school was being built, and she even stated that it's, that land can be used for anything. They want it to be used for soccer fields, the town can lease it for soccer fields. It's not agricultural land.
Well, we have differences of opinions on this, so.
And, right, but that's.
So it's gonna be looked at by the people that they have, and our own town council, which we rely on.
And also, the school will be using the land there. They'll be using the parking facilities, they will be using the fields. So it isn't just for the soccer, it is for the, the schools, and also, town. If the police want to do a tournament there, or use it, the fire department, they have access to that. And that is in the RFP that they get to use it, just like the baseball field at Marsh Field. Um, so, just so the townspeople know, it's not specifically just for, you know, the soccer, the soccer board is developing the land for soccer use, but also the school is gonna be using it, they have access to it. And also, through the RFP, the town also gets to use it as well.
Duly noted, um, and it would be nice if at some point after referring to town council, if everybody could sit down and try and find a solution that's amenable to everybody.
If you get all that stuff to, uh, to Mike as soon as you can.
Absolutely.
Is there a question for the board, or?
Question for the speaker. Uh, Dan Harry, second thirteen Beechwood Drive. You mentioned there was a hundred acres up there?
Yes, sir.
Out of that hundred acres, how much is truly agricultural farmable land?
Um, I believe at the time twenty acres were classified as ag.
Okay, the rest of it is classified as forest, woods?
I am not sure of that classification.
So we're talking, we're talking about twenty-eight acres basically, not the whole one hundred?
About, about twenty acres, and this is all done, it's not just, it's by soil samples, it's not just, it's the samplings of the soils themselves that determine what type of land you're dealing with.
I guess I'm trying to visualize, we have trees and everything there, so we're not taking the agricultural commission or whatever and saying, "we're cutting down trees so we can make a hundred acres of land that we can use." We're only talking about the land that is available for use, those twenty acres or whatever, correct?
Right now, um, up for discussion is just over eight acres.
Okay.
It located in the front of the school where the soils have been tested to be prime agricultural soils.
Okay, all right, I think, boy, a hundred acres, that's a lot.
Yes, it was a lot.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Yes, you are.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a public comment? Step right up.
I'm actually here to follow up, I'm sort of a piggybacking on.
Name and address, please. Miss?
Information, my name is Wendy House, I actually live in Hardwick, and I'm here to represent Ware River Nature Club, which is a nature club throughout central Mass with a lot of members in Rutland. One of our major conservation projects since we started out, um, we have several volunteer conservation projects that we're interested in, and one of the big projects that we decided to adopt has to do with grassland bird conservation. And, um, consequently, we've tried to identify areas throughout central Mass that are publicly held lands, as opposed to private farms and private lands, where birds that nest in grasslands might have an opportunity to nest and raise their young. Um, because these lands are public lands, and they're for the entire community in use, as opposed to, say, a private farm that needs hay for dairy or whatever. Um, and it had came to our attention actually a couple of years ago that, um, I didn't know it, but one of our volunteers that was really interested found out about Glenwood Fields and said, "Wow, have you ever been up there?" Um, it, it's a real gem, I, it's, it's just a gorgeous piece of property, it just goes to show the beauties of the eye of the beholder, I guess, because I go up. It just goes to show the beauties of the eye of the beholder, I guess, because I go up there and it's, wow. I mean, it's, if you want to take a walk or listen to the birds or whatever. There are bobolinks that nest there, and a lot of people don't know what bobolinks are, but, because they tend to be invisible during the nesting season, because they put their nest right near the ground. And I hope I can work with the Ad Commission on this if, in fact, an RFP goes out. Generally, the people that mow choose a time, but after we found out the bobolinks were here and using it, we had written to the prior Town Administrator and asked if there could, if we could work with the town to set up a delayed plan and work with the farmer who was doing it. It's, it can be very complicated, and we understand the farmers' need to harvest hay.
We have done that.
Yes. I think last year the haying was a bit early, and we lost the nesting bobolinks. And, but then meanwhile, you've got a new Town Administrator, and then the need for soccer fields came up. So I'm just here to add information, to answer questions, and to kind of piggyback on what Deb was saying. Bobolinks are having a really hard time. It is a bird that is in serious decline because they love hayfields and they love prime-quality hayfields. And on private lands, they generally get mowed down. The nests and the young get mowed down before they have a chance to raise the young. So they are declining quite a bit. And I brought fact sheets, which I can leave with you. I don't have enough for everybody. It's, they're not endangered birds, but they're actually, their population is plummeting pretty fast. And you don't want a bird like that to be, go on the endangered species list because then it's pretty disruptive to people trying to do things with the land. The other thoughts I had about this property were, and I can't speak for teacher, teachers here are all overworked and underpaid and have a lot to do, but I just thought that this might provide an area for some educational science opportunity. I don't know how much teachers here can use that or have the time to do it, but there's that opportunity if you set up a plan to mow some paths around the edge, for example. And I could, I could, you know, mention that we do have people that would work with teachers in classes if they want more information. We have plenty of information for that. And the other thought, and again, this isn't so much having to do with the birds and bird protection, which is really important, but the land itself physically doesn't seem to lend itself the way I've observed it. It's, it just seems like it would take an awful lot to convert that to soccer fields because of the topography. I, I'm just sort of, that's just an observation that I've made. Well, the bobolinks love that hill, so it's, it's just beautiful. I don't know how many people here have seen it, but if you want a quiet place to walk and I did, we have discovered that there's another bird that's using that for area, for nesting, which is a savanna sparrow, and it's not a sexy bird. It's a plain little brown bird. But savanna sparrows don't nest very commonly here, and they do need this kind of hayfield and grassfield. So the area still could be used for agriculture, not for pumpkin fields, but as hay, we certainly would support that. But we would suggest alterations in the haying plan, and towns don't have to do that.
We have done that.
The DPW doesn't have to, but-
We have done that. We did that last year.
Yeah, no, it was reported to me last year, I wasn't here personally, that it came in the middle of June, and you kind of have to wait till-
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
If I may, we have an email from Mike saying that he had sent a letter back in response to your letter, but he's under the impression that you may not have received it.
I never got it.
Saying that after talking with our DPW and our police chief, who's an ex-officio town bird expert,
Oh, okay.
They agreed not to mow the field until after July 4th.
For this year?
Yeah.
Okay, I tend to be a little more, push it a little more, but-
Per their request, the eggs could hatch. That he'll send another letter again, but he just wanted you to know that-
I never do hear from him, and I-
He had received the original request and had responded, but it-
Okay. And I would, yeah, maybe I'll write back to him and say, "May I suggest July 10th or July 15th?" It's, although in a year like this, I think they're doing quite well. I think we maybe have about four pairs up there this year, and, but they hide in the grass a lot, and people don't think they're there. They don't see them. And I've even had farmers say, "Well, I don't have bobolinks in my field," but they do, you know, they just don't know it. So, does anybody want a fact? I don't have a lot, but-
Sure.
And actually, this is because we're also involved with another town. I had to blackout. We were involved with a conservation project in Hubbardston with their conservation land, and Mike hasn't seen this one, but I can-
We'll share.
Get it to him, sure. And I can answer any questions. Like I say, what the town of Rutland does with the property is just that I, it's a really beautiful spot, and I didn't know about it being designated, you know, I know they do the soil testing and so forth, but I, I can say that it's definitely a wildlife-rich area, and it's valuable as a grassland bird nesting area.
All right, thank you. Yes?
Charme Bluffham, 175 Barry Paxton Road. The bobolinks, you said there's four pair that nest there?
It actually is hard to tell. There may be more, and-
There may be less. We don't know.
There, right, but there should be, there are at least that many, yes.
Okay, fair point. Is there a way to relocate those?
Well, wild birds can't, you cannot tamper with wild migratory birds. It's against, it's against federal law. You can't move nests. You're not really supposed to destroy nests. That's against the law, too. But it's, they're protected on a federal level from having-
The bobolinks are protected?
All migratory birds are from being moved, killed, their nests destroyed, and so forth. But most of the time, the feds don't come out and enforce with the farmers, but technically, they're breaking the law, the federal law, to protect migratory birds.
So when they, when they were doing the hay and that would destroy the nests?
Right.
So, all these years, they've been violating the law?
Well, if they're-
Destroying the nests?
Well, actually, like they said, a lot of the times, because of weather and so forth, a lot of times haying is done later. It's not a done deal. Farmers-
They do it twice a year.
Yes, and I still would recommend twice a year because of the way the grass grows in and so forth, but the first haying to be a little later.
Now, would it be possible that those four pair could migrate themselves across the street where there's abundant of open field here?
We could ask.
Well, no, it's a good question.
Well, some animals, if you disturb their habitat, they'll migrate to a close area in proximity to build a new nest or a new den or whatnot.
It's a good question, because if you, if something happens to a robin's nest, they'll build somewhere else and they'll re-nest, but bobolinks can only nest once a year. They're pretty touchy birds. We also know that the closest grasslands around are private lands, and they're not protected, and-
No, the land right across the roadway going into Glenwood is all, that's all the town land.
And the others, they are touchy. I could give you a fact sheet. They need five acres. This is the other tough thing about these grass, that they need at least five acres.
There's a hundred acres there.
Yeah.
So that land is more than five acres.
If they didn't have the Glenwood fields, they would attempt to find another area. I think they'd probably go to Jordan's or something and get mowed down.
Well, have you been up, have you been at the Glenwood area? So we're talking about the field here. If you look to the left of that field, there's all that, there's approximately ninety-five acres right there with open field where they could burrow in the ground.
Yeah, well, they nest in the gra, in the hay.
In the hay, but there's ample area right there.
Yeah, and I, I'm not aware of that. I just know about Jordan's.
I think we have enough information in our handout.
And so, anyway, any other questions? I'm happy to-
All right. Thank you very much.
It is, it's a tough, it's a tough topic. It really is, yeah.
For what it's worth, we did get your correspondence.
Yes.
The board to get it, so.
I, I knew that, but I also wanted to come tonight because I wanted to learn more about the agricultural designation and where we stood, and I have to say, I, you know, I've taken an interest in the area. I mean, it's just really pretty, so I just, what's that?
Come on out.
I, well, I do, I do enjoy it, but, and I, but I'm not a voting resident of the town of Rutland, but I'm just giving our club's viewpoint, and this is one of our projects, and we hope that you can work something out for everybody, really.
Thank you for the clarity.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have public comment? All right, thank you.
Charme Bluffham, 175 Barry Paxton Road. RFP will be discussed at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Just asked to have it put on.
Put on?
Put on the agenda.
And when, when do they, how long does it usually take to approve those?
What's going to be on for discussion next, next meeting?
We have correspondence from Mike saying that it was, it was planned to be on for next meeting.
Oh, okay.
In advance, before tonight's meeting.
Okay.
But part of it was to make sure that we had time to get the correspondence from AdCom to KP and everything.
I think we definitely need the two weeks to hear back from legal, so. July 1st.
Okay. All right, I'll keep.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. All right, now we'll move on. We'll go right to, right to all business.
Fire chief here.
Yeah, the chief's here.
Oh, excuse me. Excuse me, chief. You're sitting there patiently waiting.
Patiently, yes.
Someone's right by you.
Thank you for inviting me this evening. Just wanted to give you an update on the condition of the fire department over the last six months and kind of wrap up the end of FY19 for you. As we close out the fiscal year, the next two weeks, calls for the fire and EMS over this past year has increased ten percent over the last, the previous year. Types and severity of the calls have gotten worse. Motor vehicle accidents, while the total has gone down, the severity of the accidents have increased. So we're just keeping an eye on that, and Police Chief and I are looking at trends in locations to try to track that as well. Total fire and property losses for this year was $357,000. It's down from $2.75 million last year, so it's significant. But all it takes is one significant fire to throw you out of whack, and last year was the countryside fire that put us over. Just giving you an update on grants. Over the last year, we've been awarded several grants. One through DCR was $4,000. Emergency management planning grants was $3,650. And the Department of Public Health, we received a grant of $27,800, and that's what replaced Car One. We've got two grants out right now pending. One is the assistance to firefighter grants. That's to replace the ladder. The grant is for $1.1 million. The town would only be required to match it by $50,000. So hopefully, we'll start hearing the awards coming out over the summertime, early, early fall. The last grant is also through the federal government. It's the SAFER Grant. It's staffing for hiring of three full-time firefighters over a three-year period. That should be coming out September, October timeframe. As far as equipments, as many of you went to town meeting, it was pretty well-attended. We did have the new ambulance presented out there, thanking the residents of the town for supporting at the previous town meeting. The new ambulance is now in service and is operating very well. The old, as you know, the old one was traded in. It's been removed from service. That was picked up last week. This past town meeting, we had the capital plan approved, the replacement of our squad. It's been ordered and should be arriving sometime March of 2020. At the end of the year, we started doing some annual testing of, we sent our ladder out for its annual ladder testing five weeks ago. Interesting enough, it came back and it failed pretty bad. It took, we should get it back in service tomorrow, so it's been out of service for five weeks. All the seals in the aerial had to be replaced due to the age. That apparatus is now just over twenty years old. So that truck should be back in town. We're kind of getting nervous about the 4th of July and getting the flag up, so. But we should see that return this week. This past year, our, we've been active in fire prevention within the schools and also with the seniors. We did lose our fire prevention educator, Dan Dean. He left for employment to go to the town of Templeton. That position is being trained and should be replaced by the time school starts this year. We have started a new program combined with the seniors, the Council on Aging. It's a secured key box, so if any resident has a long-term or even a temporary medical need within their home, we can provide you on loan a key box that is key to us only. It's a similar type of box that we use to get into commercial buildings in town, but this is a much smaller unit. That can be, just hangs over your door and you close your door, and we can get access in case of emergency. So that is available through loaning through the Council on Aging, and it's also available for sale. So if you would like to buy one, if you travel to Florida for the winter and you want us to have access, that is available as well. Lots going on in the next couple of weeks with the planning of 4th of July. The fireworks permit is in place. That is all set. We'll be working with DPW to cordon the area off with the snow fencing as usual. The bonfire with the Girl Scouts is next Friday evening, so that's been taken care of as well. With the replacement of Dan Dean, we have gone through the hiring process of replacing that full-time position. The new individual, Michael Pimental, will start July 1st, next, two weeks from today. So he will fully get us to full staffing. Other than that, we are under budget and no major problems, and things are going really well, so.
Can I just ask for clarification?
Yep.
You mentioned about the ladder being failing, but-
Yep.
Did I also understand that one of the grants that you're awaiting is a grant to replace that?
Correct.
So there is some forward, think-
Absolutely, and we've been working with the capital plan. It's been on their radar for the last several years because it is a large-ticket item.
Right.
And, you know, we're just trying to make sure that the town is aware of this coming forward, and if we can get federal funding for it, that's win-win.
This is your chance.
Yeah, absolutely. Just one other thing. We participated over the weekend in the Fire Department muster in Princeton. Cellar S. Had a great time. I just want to put you all on notice that the town of Rutland will be hosting it next year on the Town Common. So a lot of details will be coming forward on that, so it'll be a big event. It's always the Saturday of Father's Day weekend, so just put that in your calendar and some of them to look forward to next, next summer, so.
Awesome.
Great.
You guys had a busy weekend?
Calls are-
No, I'm talking about-
Oh.
The muster, warmboarding stuff, the golf tournament.
Yes, yeah, so we've been keeping, keeping quite busy. Golf tournament put on by the Fire Brigade. We had over 152 golfers that day. Weather was pretty decent, and it was a good time, so. Other than that-
Good job.
Moving along.
I do have a question on the ladder truck.
Sure.
What's the normal life expectancy of that piece of equipment?
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
Yeah.
And we're at?
We're at-
At twenty years.
So according to NFPA, it's fifteen years frontline, ten years reserve status. So after the fifteen years, significant refurbishments, you know, investment into it to get it to carry the next ten years. That's for a department that has two ladder trucks. They have one in frontline, one in reserve. We don't have that, and we would never need that at this point. So for us to keep it twenty years, it's been pretty heavily used. And when it was purchased in 99, a lot of the larger buildings in town were not here. And it's not that, you know, if people say we get a hundred-foot ladder, while we don't have buildings that tall, it's not about the height, it's about the reach. If you look at some of your homes, your regular Colonial, you know, sits off the street quite a ways, you're looking for the reach, not the height, so that's what we're looking at. With a lot of the new construction now, lightweight truss roofs, you can't get on the roofs like you used to. They fail much quicker now due to fire load, so.
Well, that's the big thing. It keeps our firefighters off the roof.
Correct. Yep.
And onto something that-
Yep.
Pull out of there quick.
Ladder truck did make several rescues at the countryside fire. There were a lot of rescues overlaid, so it is a pretty heavily-used vehicle.
Great. Couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Can I ask why we lost Dan Dean to Templeton?
Firefighter Dean is a resident of Templeton.
Good enough, enough. Thank you.
Your lung-
Got it.
Children in school.
Got it.
Yep.
That makes sense. Okay. On the premise of the key box, I know some communities have like a- On the premise of the key box, I know some communities have like a daily call-up, like an automated call-in to check the welfare of our seniors. Do we have any type of program or is that something that might be on the horizon or?
That program, to my knowledge, is being run through dispatch and is available for people to sign up to have that program done.
Do you have any numbers, how many people?
You'd have to get that through Mike, yeah, Mike would have that.
Okay, and lastly, 4th of July?
Yep.
You work in the 4th of July?
I'm working 3rd and 4th of July.
3rd and 4th of July? Great, I would...
Do you, sorry, you might not know this, but do you know is the plan to keep traffic, last year wasn't it all traffic going out after the fireworks? Is that still the plan?
A full traffic plan will be publicized this week. We had a parking committee meeting last week with the DPW, police, myself and the town administrator. We will be coming up with a full plan, it'll be on town website and public information will come out on. We did close down Main Street for the first half hour after fireworks was over, so people can cross the road much quicker and safer. So something similar to that will happen again.
Okay, yeah, I had heard last year it was a little bit different, but it seemed to...
It worked better.
Yes.
So we're just trying to iron out some of the things we learned from that.
That's fine, thank you.
Great.
We're looking forward to the 4th of July, I know that contract, contractually obligated to work the 4th of July. It would like, and we kind of talked about it at the beer tent, at the muster, but it's, I would like to think that participation in the, in the float or the parade is considered work for our chiefs? Yeah, no issues, yeah?
We'll talk about the next contract.
Enjoy.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night, thanks, Seth.
One more question?
Actually, I don't have a question, I have a comment, Harry, second, 13 Peachwood Drive. I'd like to give a shout out kudo to the chief. I met with an individual who's part of setting up the 4th of July fireworks program. And he said of the towns he works with, it's a pleasure to work with the chief because he has a better understanding of how to set up the fireworks and what's involved and the safety issues in most towns that they work with. So his knowledge there is, is a blessing for us, so again, chief, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you.
All right, now we can go to old business. We're gonna skip all of the updates because town administrator's not here. So we'll go to the appointment list. I don't think, I don't think we really need to address appointments. We still have, we still have recommendations and letters coming in. So my preference is just to wait, wait two more weeks, do them as a group.
Fair enough.
And we do have a note here from Mike, if anyone was interested, saying, as requested by some members of board, he researched the regulations regarding appointments and officials continue to serve even after their appointments expire until they are either reassigned or reappointed or are replaced. Therefore, there is no immediate need to confirm appointments before the end of the fiscal year. I know that had come up last year because there were a few that were held until after the start of the fiscal year and it was this blurry question. So just wanted to put that out there.
I feel more comfortable having a full board to hash it out.
The school maintenance agreement. The only questions we had last time were with the DPW superintendent as far as maintenance goes if the back fees to the town were appropriate, and he's addressed those, said, you have the letter in front of you?
We got as much as we could out of him.
The letter said that he had reviewed, that Joe had reviewed the school maintenance agreement and finds it to be reasonable. It increases almost 2% annually. Lobbying for any additional payments would ultimately be passed on to residents. And the costs only become excessive with bad winters and there is no way to estimate that or plan for that. So he would advise signing it as it was written. And please take note, the work will be completed according to current DPW standards and schedule. So should, do you want a motion to...
I would entertain a motion to, to sign the maintenance agreement.
I'll make a motion to sign and accept the new school maintenance agreement between Watruset Regional School District and the town of Rutland.
Second. If that's the motion.
Yeah, I was gonna just add the, sorry, I was looking for the dates, a three-year agreement commencing July 1st, 2019 and terminating June 30th, 2022.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Electronic communication policy. We just have this here for review. We've already, this is, this is what we accepted and approved back in January 11th, 2010.
I think it's...
I don't know that, we may need updates with it. If we're gonna be getting, if we're gonna be getting iPads or Chromebooks, if we're gonna be getting a, a town-issued email accounts. So this document may need to be updated.
Does this expire, is that why this is back before us or?
I don't believe it expires, it's a...
This is part of the conversation we had about the emails. And then I think Mike had put the funding in to one of the transfers to get that done.
Mm-hmm.
Till funding's been remedied?
Right.
Funding for the emails only, for the Chromebooks and emails?
The emails, both, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't, I haven't made it that far into my pile yet, so.
They're all over the place now, jeez, ants.
I'm sorry.
Take them back with you, kid.
Somebody could help me take that bucket out, I'm police.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, but I can't do it myself, I need...
No, we can help you on the way out, it doesn't have to be done now, right?
We can take care of it too.
With the plastic, the bin, that's your own bin?
He has mine.
Just put me in your car?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim. Congrat, you guys are awesome, I need to come here more often.
Do we have two real...
I'm very impressed.
Should I go two weeks?
Don't get pulled over with all those empties in the way.
I know.
If they do a blood alcohol, I'm sick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Should I bring this again?
Absolutely, why not?
I mean, it's a visual aid.
Gets our, gets our attention.
That's crazy.
Visual aids always help.
But thank you.
Yeah, I would love to have seen a Bubblen link if someone could have brought that in.
I literally was pulling it up, the picture of the Bubblen. It's a pretty bird, it's like there.
Oh.
I think we might have looked at it, said, oh, that's an Oriole, but it's a...
A Bubblen?
Bubblen.
Looks like a...
They're not endangered?
So, sorry, back to the electronic communications policy, is this...
See, I wish, I mean, we don't have, I think, we don't have a letter in front of us explaining that. I wish Mike were here to walk us through, but he did indicate the money had been appropriated and then they had, just to clarify to the public, we had done a study about the use of paper and just six months of paper use is more expensive than some of the other alternatives we have electronically as a board. So it saves the town money in the long run.
And resources.
And resources. Man-hours and things like that, so. Just to make it clear to everybody that's watching or listening, the move saves money for the town, so.
Which we'll be addressing in a few minutes.
Oh, we, where is that?
It's on our agenda.
Okay.
But so I guess, I guess, is the electronic, do we need to do anything with the electronic communication policy right now? Or is it just more of a for our information refresher, this is what the policy is for town?
Well, I don't know, I don't know what his intent was of putting it here, but my feeling is it may need to be re-looked at.
Yeah.
Given the fact that we're gonna be issued town email accounts.
And that we'll be doing more electronic, yeah, I understand that.
Consider it a draft for review.
Okay. Thank you.
New business, payroll certification.
So are these cost of living increases or what we got?
Well, some of them are contractual and some of them are non-contractual.
Should Mike be here to explain any, any?
They've all been reviewed by town administrator, they've all been reviewed by town accountant.
And I think these were worked in, nobody from FinComs here, these were worked into the FinCom...
They're all, they're all included in the budget.
Right, that passed a town meeting.
What's before us, just, he's got his recommendation here, right, Mike?
I think you can do them one at a time. Payroll certification for Communications Department, Communication Center. You have one for the Fire Department.
I mean, do we have something from Mike saying these are all good to go with his recommendation?
Are we talking about the, the payroll certification?
He's, he's, he's already signed them, I believe he's... Give me a second. No, they're just signed by department heads.
What's the deadline for this?
I guess it's probably...
Well, it's gotta be before the new fiscal year.
Right. And our next meeting is, we're meeting next week with a public hearing, but that's not for this.
The only one he's actually signed is the non-union personnel. The rest of them were just signed by department heads.
The rest were negotiated through a contract.
Yes, the rest were all contractual.
Okay.
There's no new positions or anything like that in, in here?
I think that these were increases and not new positions, I think, I'm looking through now.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about them?
Do we know what, Seth, when he's here, do we know what the highlighted areas in the Fire Department spreadsheet indicate? Is that like a proposed change? Weekend part-time shifts, 31,000, and then individual staff? Looks like step increases?
Yeah, it looks like those are the proposed, proposed new rates, so they're...
You have the old rate?
The old rate to the left and the new rate appears to be to the right.
Based on the new, because the contract was just renegotiated, I think.
The wage increase, yes.
Okay. One by one, Wayne?
Yeah, actually, if we could, because one I have to abstain from.
I'll make the first motion to approve the fiscal year 20 payroll certification presented by Rutland Regional Emergency Communication Center Director.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Make the second one. Motion to approve the fiscal year 20 payroll certification request by Fire Chief for the Fire Department payroll.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Safe, the last one is Safe Place and that is your, we talked about that. Any correspondence or anything on the Safe Place?
No.
I make the motion to approve the fiscal year 20 payroll certification for the Safe Place program.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we need the, the town employees, right?
Non-union personnel, yes.
Can we do them as a block?
Yes, all as a block.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve the fiscal year 20 payroll certification as a block, as presented and signed off by town administrator for our non-union personnel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
That's it, right?
That's it for those. And we have, we have a letter from town administrator regarding the Regional Resource Group. Their contract renewal. Somebody have a question?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, go ahead.
February 12th, Glenwood Road, Rollin.
Yes.
What about your police and your highway? You're not gonna certi, you don't certify their payroll, it's not there?
We don't have those before us right now.
Well, we have the police, right, so the police were in here.
The police, I didn't even, you didn't certify theirs? You said, you said...
Highway's in there too, DPW.
You said...
Well, let's go back, let's go back and...
Dispatch, and that's not police.
They're under non-union, uh...
They can't be under non-union, they're union.
These police are union, aren't they? Let's, let's, let's go back and revisit that.
The chief is...
No, I just, it's asked, I mean, if you're recertifying for the first year for their payroll.
What I was doing, Skip, was that, so this is, this is what was presented to us from our town administrator, if I, if I may, Wayne? And this is what I was speaking to, that this package presented and welcome to book. The package that was present, maybe we can modify my motion?
Well, yes.
Because he has a comment here at the end saying...
When I stated, I stated that it was for non-union personnel, there are union personnel in this too. Which would be the Police Department.
And DPW.
And the DPW.
Okay, no, I just, I just didn't want the unions, because I don't come that side, I don't want the unions coming back, hey, you never certified, you never certified.
But it's inclusive of the non-union personnel too.
Can I clarify the motions or what I'm asking that we approve is what had been presented to us in these three double-sided pages labeled fiscal year 20 payroll certification, town administrator, the treasurer's department, the town clerk's department, conservation commission, the police chief, and then the Police Department, it's like support staff, the building inspector, the gas inspector, the electrical inspector, the plumbing inspector, weights and measures, animal control, parking clerk, regional dispatch director, the fire chief, director of public works and the admin staff and all the DPW custodians, laborers, equipment operators, as presented, the town planner, border health clerical, council on aging director and an outreach worker, the veteran service agent, the library director and reported staff and library aide, cable access director. So presented by town administrator in these five pages.
He does...
Asked to clarify that motion.
And Mike does have a comment here saying Fire Department as per attached sheet, Safe Place Department, see attached spreadsheet, Dispatch Department as per attached sheet also, so it looks like for whatever reason those departments pulled out there.
Just make sure you do it.
Jeff, I'll second your clarified motion.
All right, all those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye. Go. Welcome back.
Did you want me to do something? The end?
No.
Oh, I thought you said something is the end. I didn't have to sign any paper or anything?
No.
No. If you'd like our contact information, would be happy to give it to you, so you're not up to your job.
I had a question, I don't know if I heard it right. I have one question. He said he'd be open 8:00 to 8:00, right, and he'd have 20 cars, is that right?
That's what he said.
Yeah. I don't think he ever had 20 or allowed that many, but I didn't know what to... Yeah, I don't think he ever had twenty or allowed that many, but I didn't know what to say. But anyway.
Can...
We have another deal with twenty.
You're going, yeah. And I don't see how we can use water pa... base paint, I mean, on a car.
Can we find out here, if we can find out what the parameters are of that Class III license for the number of cars and the hours of operation from planning or whoever?
I believe that's a Class II, not a Class III.
It says Class III on our thing, but we had a note that it said...
Oh, it is Class III on my side.
We had a note on the...
The application is for twenty.
Up to twenty, yeah.
And that's what we approved, twenty. And what was...
And the hours of operation?
Yeah, hours from eight to eight, was it, did you say?
Yeah, but he can say those are the hours that he's gonna run, but there's nothing to hold him to those hours, I mean, it is a business...
He could come in and fix them away.
He has a right to open during regular business hours.
If it gets out of control, come back.
How do you get back here?
We have meetings every two weeks.
Oh, you do?
When they get over to the public.
Do you write to him, or?
Well, yeah, we had received your correspondence, so you can send that...
Well, you had sent me a letter, and that's why, you know, the letter that went to everybody.
Oh, as in a butter?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so you can send an email back to that same email address, and that'll go to our admin that will then forward everything to us.
I'll give...
You can certainly stop at the Selectman's Office and talk to the town administrator, too, if you want.
The what office?
The town administrator.
Town Administrator.
Get the old library.
Oh, the old library.
To the Laura.
Whereabouts in the old library? In the front, first coming in the door?
If you go in the door and go left, it's in the corner.
Oh, it's in the left, okay.
But you'll see, there's a secretary directly across from the door.
Okay, all right. Yeah, because we had, we really had problems. Because we're way to close, you know? Yeah.
So here's the phone number. They work regular weekdays to the Selectman's Office, so Laura would answer that. Well, Mike is our town administrator. Myself, my email is on there, but we also have a town email.
All right, okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming back.
Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
Have a good night, ma'am. My apologies, I think she was confused because originally I postponed the meeting because Mr. Claria wasn't here.
Right.
And I said I would take it later on.
Right.
Thanks for taking her back.
Thank you.
So that's probably why she came back.
So we have a correspondence for the Regional Resource Group. Is that...
Yeah, the contract's gonna be expiring soon. And you have some information in front of you from town administrator. Looking at separating the part-time employee from that group and making that person a town employee being shared with, between Rutland and Hubbardston.
Who's requesting it?
The town is.
This came up at the retreat.
Right, I was gonna say, we just talked about this at the retreat, that it, if it can, we can make it a two-thirds time in Rutland and one-third in Hubbardston, then it becomes a full-time position, a full-time benefited position, so hopefully there's more stability in that position.
We've been having a lot of people leave that role.
A lot of turnover, right?
But it's gonna require an amendment or a change in the contract, so...
It has to do with the dispatch...
The Board of Assessors.
The clerk that works in the Assessor's Office that you would go see. It's that position.
Yeah, Jeff, there's two memos, the other one has to do with the dispatch.
This is our RGG.
This one here?
Yep.
Can you s... Chalm of Offlin, 175 Barry Paxton Road. If it is turned into a full-time position, who covers the benefits? And what is the retirement throw? Who puts into that?
The town would cover the benefit.
But which town, if it's Hubbardston and then Rutland? Who's covering all those benefits? Taxpayers from Rutland covering them? Hubbardsey covering, you know, I mean, that's a lot of...
Two-thirds, one-third.
Yeah, prorated, right?
For each town?
So this would be, it would be an agreement that we would fraction the costs for a full-time person, right?
For all benefits or just the pay?
My understanding is everything would be, everything would be split, and if you look at...
But does it say everything, or is it just discuss the pay?
It says, it doesn't, it says, "As such, RRG, which is the Regional Resource Group, has agreed to provide us with a three-month extension of the current contract, while the details of the new transition are fully ironed out."
So this will come before the board again, I'd imagine, when this is worked out, but this is just to extend the contract with the provider. And to give you a little background, I believe Hubbardston and Barry share an Economic Development Coordinator. So this would be similar to what other towns in the region are doing with some of these positions where the turnover rate's gonna be high, and we want somebody there to be working, so it benefits everybody if we all pool resources.
And we had, we had CMR PC in, at our retreat last week, and they talked about how a lot of smaller rural communities are doing this, kind of contracting, regionalizing a position among a town or two to make it a more attractive position.
Consistency, that's the...
Right, because the turnover...
And you get more talented people in, and they actually designed that position, that Economic Development one, that's split between two of the communities out here, so...
So it's not an uncommon occurrence, and there's models in place, so it's, I think it gets cost prohibitive to constantly be bringing a new person in every...
Oh, absolutely. I was just curious if they've worked out the details of...
I think that's still being fleshed out.
We good with that, RRG?
Do we need to do anything?
What's before us?
No, we don't need to do anything.
It just says, "Once the Board of Assessors have received a contract from RRG and voted to approve it, Mike would sign it on behalf of the town." We can ask that we see it before he sign it, I assume, but because it's a Board of Assessors position, they're the ones that are going to be the most involved, and we'll, we can give it a look to make sure nothing...
Well, can we authorize the TA?
Right, we can authorize him to take care of it also, we don't need to, I don't...
Can we do that?
I think he's already doing it, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
I mean, it sounds like he is, unless we say otherwise, I'm fine with him doing, I mean, he's working with the Board of, and he's working with the Board of Assessors, so, yeah.
Okay, great. Sounds good. Same with CM Geeks.
Same thing, they're working out details. I don't have that sheet.
Number thirty, what are you at?
So this is a memo regarding CM Geeks to say that the town's contract with the RRG for assessing will be expiring soon, they're currently, we are currently, we currently regionalize the service between the town of Rutland, Rutland Regional Emergency Communication Center, and the town of Barry. Paul McKenzie is currently drafting a new contract for us, the administrator, that Administrator Golis and Mike will be reviewing once received. He will update us farther, further as the process progresses. I can't talk tonight. So this is just that it's on his...
On its radar.
On his list.
All right, it's departmental transfer approvals. First one we have is a transfer from the town administrator's salary to the town network purchase services. The new, I'll just read, read the explanation. It's written into the request. "The new vision software for the Assessor's Office requires a newer server system than the town currently has. As such, the town needs a new computer server. CM Geeks saw this as an opportunity to create a new virtual server for the town overall. And this is the cost of the new virtual server."
How much?
Nine thousand, nine hundred, forty-two dollars, sixty-eight cents.
How do we pay for that?
A transfer from town administrator's salary to the network purchase services account.
It's the discrepancy in the salary difference between Margaret's position and Mike's position.
Yes.
And that we had budgeted extra for the interim, not knowing how long the interim was going to go.
Which is only gonna be good for this year, too.
Right, so...
I mean, should we, should we get quotes for this, because it is above five thousand dollars?
It's right under the, well, it's right under the capital improvement, right, nine thousand, nine hundred dollars?
Well, I mean, that's still, if it's over ten, the state requires you to bid it out, but we should... I mean, that's right under the bid amount, so I would suggest we get three quotes to see if we're being cost prudent on that.
And we just talked about updating the contract with Geeks, too, correct?
Yeah.
That was, I don't know if it was the whole contract for CM Geeks.
This is gonna be part of it.
Who's Paul McKenzie? Two forty-two Main Street, it's got our address. Does he represent us?
Yeah, well, yeah.
I don't know who he is.
No.
Paul McKenzie?
Paul McKenzie?
I just use the IT guy from the town, because I call him sometimes to help me out in account stuff.
From CM Geeks.
When we're trying to, CM Geeks.
So he's the recognized IT guy for the town?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, Paul, we all know who you are.
Sorry, sir. Yeah, so the invoice here says him at two forty-two Main. Okay, so CM Geeks, all right, well...
Um, I don't know, I don't know how this works because this is with our current IT contract.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can...
You mean, is it outside of the scope of our normal services?
Correct, that's what I, yeah, that's what I don't know. Do we bid it out because it's outside, or do we...
We don't have to bid it, if it's under a certain amount, we can just get three quotes. I mean, it's, it's easy enough for us to do, and I always, I, in my opinion, I would always err on the side of trying to save the town money.
Yeah.
But I mean, if we feel comfortable with the contract...
No, I like it, I like the idea. Could we, could we maybe push it back towards the town administrator? Try to get at least a couple quotes to make sure that due diligence is being done, and then authorize the town administrator to go ahead and...
With a sum not to exceed?
Approve on our behalf.
I don't know if this needs to be done by the end of the fiscal year, so can we request that he receive...
We can just have him get quotes and then review them, and then make a decision based on financial disprudence, if that's what we wanna do.
But I was wondering, do we, can we vote, just say that we approve this?
We may be having another board meeting before the end of fiscal year, too, if anything comes up. We may be having a last-minute meeting.
That's true. But I was wondering if we can approve up to the nine thousand, nine hundred, forty-two, sixty-eight, or do we just, do we need to approve a dollar amount, or do we just...
We could approve that, with the assumption that that's the lowest possible bid, based on three...
Right, that we want additional bids that are, if there's lower...
Rather not have another special meeting, just to sign this. We can...
Well, it's up to the board. Do you wanna look at other prices?
I think we could word it like Mitchell said, that we can do...
Have Mike do it. I mean, that's pretty much, you know, have him solicit the bids, review the prices and the scopes, and do what he feels best, and report back to the board, just authorize him to make the decision.
Authorize him to make that decision. Right?
I didn't know if there was concern that we should say that we authorize him up to this dollar amount, not to exceed this dollar amount for this project, because we already know that this is kind of, we have this as a hard number.
Well, can we authorize it with a stipulation that the town administrator do due diligence and verify that that's the lowest possible? Or is it too late once we move it?
Depends on how you word it. Depends on how you word it.
Intentions are the same here, we don't want to delay this, we want the money to get there.
Can we authorize the transfer if Mike does his due diligence in receiving other bids? And if he feels this is the best, then we authorize the transfer, if not, we have to meet again on it anyway. So we'll authorize the transfer pending Mike reviewing other bids and making a cost determination.
Second. Make that a motion?
Make that a motion.
Second.
All right, that sounds good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Uh, second one is a transfer from town administrator's salary to Highway Administrator Superintendent's salary. Due to the differences in pay rates between Superintendent Kelleher and Director Buckley, a termination pay balance that was paid to Superintendent Kelleher, this amount will be projected to be in the red by this amount. A transfer is needed in order to pay Director Buckley's, the salary listed in his contract with the town.
The old town administrator, or, I don't say old, sorry, Margaret, the former town administrator's salary. Correct? Same situation? I'm not taking away from Mike's salary.
Correct, this is the overage, and then...
I think he said it was almost thirty thousand dollars that we had to transfer out.
So we're looking for sixteen hundred and sixty-five dollars.
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer from account number zero zero one dash one two nine dash five one one zero dash zero zero zero, Town Administrator's salary, to account number zero zero one dash four two one dash five one one zero dash zero zero zero, Highway Administrator Superintendent's salary, for a sum of one thousand, six hundred, sixty-five dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Next is a transfer from town administrator's salary to Highway Administrator Purchase Services. The town's GIS mapping software license has expired. Director Buckley is looking to renew the license that we have. We actually have four. As well as upgrade them in order to allow for custom maps to be made to help particular projects more effective and efficient.
I know that this is something that Joe's really been pushing for, to help DPW's job more efficient, become more efficient, and so... I'll make a motion to transfer four thousand, nine hundred, forty-four dollars from account number zero zero one dash one two nine dash five one one zero dash zero zero zero, Town Administrator's salary, to account number zero zero one dash four two one dash five four zero zero dash zero zero zero, Highway Administrator Purchased Services.
Second.
Did you state the amount?
Four thousand, nine hundred, forty-four dollars.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. The next is a transfer from the town administrator's salary to the town network purchase services. This transfer would allow the town administrator to work with CM Geeks in purchasing Chromebooks, tablets, or other electronic options for the Select Board and Finance Committee to help reduce the amount of paper that is used in preparation for public meetings. This would allow for more efficient meeting preparation, easier access to past documents, and better compliance with public records law, and having a set location to store public documents for public meetings. Members will still be able to decline the option to use their device if they prefer paper, if they prefer paper. But the town at least has the option to issue them to all members who are eligible to receive one. It's two hundred and eighty dollars per device, is a quote from CM Geeks.
It doesn't sound bad. That's like a laptop, right?
Yeah, Chromebook is, yeah.
Yeah, there's no storage, it's just internet use and...
Right to the cloud?
Right.
So does this cost include the cloud service, or the storage that we're gonna have to...
I think that's the next item, it's for the email.
Yeah, with cloud service, I think, right?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to transfer from account zero zero one dash one two nine dash five one one zero dash zero zero zero, Town Administrator's salary, to account number zero zero one dash one five five dash five two zero zero dash zero zero zero, Town Network Purchase Services, a sum total of three thousand, six hundred, forty dollars for the purchase of Chromebooks for use by the Select Board and Finance Committee.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Next would be a transfer from the town administrator's salary to the town network purchase services. The transfer would allow the town to work with CM Geeks to purchase new email licenses for the members of the Select Board. While the goal is to be able to obtain town email addresses for all town appointments, this would allow us to start that process and move forward from there.
Very good.
I'll make a motion to transfer from account zero zero one dash one two nine dash five one one zero dash zero zero zero, town administrator's salary, to account number zero zero one dash one five five dash five two zero zero dash zero zero zero, town network purchase services, a sum total of five hundred dollars for the new email licenses for the members of the Select Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we have appropriation transfer from health insurance to the Medicare account.
Skip the animal control?
Mine are all in different orders, so I just-
Working my way up?
I'm kind of like thumbing my way through all this. Yeah, I see there is a animal control.
All right, we'll skip, we'll go back and do that one.
Okay.
I was on for the last one. Uh, this is a transfer from ACO, Animal Control Officer Assistant Wages, to the Animal Control Officer Purchased Services, an amount of eight hundred dollars. Request to cover an unexpected veterinary bill and rabies vaccine for the, for the animal control officer.
Oh, that's no fun.
Sounds like an interesting incident.
That's no fun.
Series of shots.
The animal control officer has a vet bill for himself.
Is that included a get well card? I'll make the motion. Motion that we approve the transfer of amount of eight hundred dollars. Account number two nine two fifty-one twenty from Animal Control Officer Assistant Wages to account two ninety-two fifty-two hundred for the ACO purchased services, eight hundred dollars.
Some, oh, go ahead.
I was going to second.
Yeah, that's fine. My only question is just that, that there's still remaining sums available on animal control assistant wages, which Mike certifies that there is, so, for the remaining, remainder of the fiscal year. So that was just my only-
The assumption that the money is, is there?
Nope.
Because we don't have his signature on there, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Uh, now we'll go to the transfer from health insurance account to the Medicare account. Underestimated Medicare budget based on employment levels and salary amounts for fiscal year 2019.
Whose signature is this?
Becky's.
Okay.
So this is a sum total of four thousand dollars. I'll make a motion to transfer from account zero zero one dash nine one four dash five one zero zero dash zero zero zero, health insurance, to account number zero zero one dash nine one six dash five one zero zero dash zero zero zero, Medicare, the sum total of four thousand dollars for the Medicare adjustment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Yeah. Question from the chair, please.
Yes, sir.
Is that, what portion of Medicare is that for? I mean, the town employees don't pay Social Security, so, but they're required to pay Medicare? Is that where that's coming from?
I, I don't know.
Everybody pays Medicare, even state employees, town employees.
Okay, because I know, they also have their own health insurance plans, so that's why I was curious as to that. Okay.
That answers your question?
Okay.
Select Board official name change.
Um, I, oh, sorry. I have more transfers from reserved fund by Fire Department and Department of Public Works. Oh, these transfers only require action by the Finance Committee, which will take place at their meeting on Thursday. The memo is just an update to inform you that these requests have been made. Never mind. It was interdepartmental transfers. Sorry.
So this is coming up for us?
On that-
For the special?
No, this, it says it only requires action by FinCom and that they'll talk about it at their meeting on Thursday night. It's just a memo to update us that-
Just an FYI.
FYI, yeah.
So we'll get some big numbers coming up here. Can we just put it out for the public, what we're talking about here?
For sure.
You want to list them?
I would, uh, just, so it's not an enigma here. So what is requested to transfer from the reserve fund? Five thousand dollars from a certain account. Present balance is only two hundred and seventy-six dollars. And this is from the fire chief, reserve fund money. One from Highway for two thousand dollars, paying for emergency repairs to Turkey Hill Road Culvert due to a road collapse of a culvert failure. This is through Highway and RTA. Um, and just supporting documents from Director Buckley, emergency repairs, fifteen hundred dollars for an excavator rental, five hundred for gravel stone. They've got thirty-five hundred dollars estimated for paving. The work has yet to be done. So they need two thousand from reserves clearly put. And then the Turkey Hill with the itemization on what they needed, the pipes, the rental, stone, backfill. Okay. Thank you. Fair enough.
And lastly, Select Board official name change.
If I may, through the chair.
Go ahead.
I requested this be put on. There was an article last week, it was either in the Telegram or Millford Daily News, about communities in central Massachusetts that have Boards of Selectmen changing the official name of the board to incentivize more inclusion by female participants. And seeing as how our Board Chair is a woman and we have another woman serving on the board and being the future father of a daughter that's incoming, I thought it would be proactive if we followed those communities that were heading in that direction and not be behind the curve. I know that Peter, who's sitting here, had done some work on this last year in getting a provision in the general bylaws changed to be reflective of Select Board versus Board of Selectmen. But an official change would require a warrant, an article warrant to a special town meeting, which we have coming up. So I wanted the board to maybe, if that's something we think would be a good step, we could talk about it.
I have a question, if I may. Maybe Peter can answer this, or Skip, or somebody. I thought, I remember a few years ago, voting at town meeting at Glenwood, something about a name change from Board of Selectmen to-
Yep, and that was in the general provisions.
Okay, that was-
Peter can talk about that process a little bit.
Okay, that wasn't-
Hi there, Peter Crane, Chair of the Act Law Bylaw Committee. Yes, that's exactly correct. We added a provision as part of our codification effort of the bylaws that started years ago now. One of the things I've been pushing for is to change Select Board to Board of, sorry, Board of Selectmen, which is what's required by Massachusetts law today, into Select Board. And that's why we added the provision. And all the bylaws are going to be changed to have that nomenclature instead. Are we sure all it takes is a town meeting vote to change that?
The information that we were provided by the clerk was that to make an official change, we need a town meeting article to authorize a selectman to petition the legislature.
To petition the legis, yes, it's, it's a special act is required by the legislature in order to fully, in order to actually properly rename.
Yeah, I think more and more towns in central Mass, there's an interesting map that was displayed throughout central Massachusetts about who was moving in that direction. And there's quite a few. And it would just, I think, be a good gesture to perhaps head in that direction if it doesn't cost the town any resources other than vote. Seems like it would be a good measure.
Doesn't require a ballot? I don't think it does, a ballot measure. I think it just has to be a town meeting vote.
Anita does say that she and Damian are going to the Mass Town Clerk Conference on Thursday. And one of the classes is a potpourri of topics in a clerk's world being presented by Lauren Goldberg, one of our town councils. So she was going to try to see if she could connect with Lauren and get some sort of insight to make sure that we're on the right path.
Well, other towns have done it, right? So followed the model.
Interestingly enough, some have only gone partway. Some have done exactly what Rutland has done so far, which is to make, to apply this to the general bylaws. Andover took the next step to actually petition the general court to change their town charter because their town charter said Board of Selectmen. But either way, there's no way to do it without involving the legislature.
I didn't realize that it was two separate things, to be honest. I thought, I knew, I remembered the town vote a few years ago now for the general bylaws, so. I think we can definitely pursue it.
Yeah, I support it, it's fine.
Or we can go straight to the town charter, snicker.
Let's not rush things, Peter.
Let's, let's not discuss a charter tonight. Please.
Okay, do we need any action on this? Or just kind of get it on our radars? And it sounds like there's interest in continuing it, so.
We have to stoke the legislative, legislative process here.
But it sounds like we might need to consider a, an article.
An article at town meeting to authorize the Select Board to petition the legislature.
So who, who would be the catalyst to present that, the special? Which department?
Select Board.
Would we do it for ourselves?
Yeah.
Do we want to, is that something we want to pursue?
Fine, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we're not, so, I mean, we can, we can start theirs.
I don't think we need a motion or a vote on it. We just, just do it.
Yeah, I don't think you need a motion until you're ready to place a warrant.
Right.
Great.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Good, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Thanks, Peter.
Just don't want it to come and go that we timed out.
Right.
And then, you know, we have the opportunity and, what do you mean timed out in terms of?
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't do whatever we had to do to, to get this done. And then it come the, the special, we dropped the ball, so.
Yeah.
So, seeing that we have to write it, present it.
Yeah, at least the four of us have it on, in our minds now, so.
Yep.
Anybody else have anything to add tonight?
Uh, do we have any unfinished business in preparation of the July fourth coming up? Because we're going to have a quick meeting on July first. The fourth is our big week.
We're going to get an update from the chief on traffic. Uh, and his preparations, other than that?
Okay.
I don't think so.
Skip, you satisfied with the package?
Yeah, I am now, yeah. I mean, I never start picking up the certain floor.
Right.
Yeah.
So a lot of the things that the new TA he does is, he num, he numbers all the presentations here on the, on the order of business in there. He's got a method to his, I wouldn't say madness because he's pretty sharp.
Organizing.
He's very organized and so, yeah.
I think that's a good thing.
You guys, yeah, oh, yeah, you guys are all good.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, man.